If that's your, just, you want to take a look at that?
No. I fully understand differential economics, that's not an issue, but I'm asking-
Your second question was?
The second question. I suspect that the total capacity of the parking garage is predicated on expectation of some additional parking demands and revenue coming in from collateral development coming beyond the proponents' project.
I would say that's partially true.
So, my concern, in addition to hers, is if collateral development does not happen quickly, or perhaps not for a long time, we then have a problem covering the nut to pay for the garage.
Well, the nut to pay for the garage will be covered on the front end with vans. I think you know what those are, correct?
But that debt service has to be covered, you know? That debt service is interest-free for ten years by Special Act of State Legislature.
It's not interest-free.
I said, "interest-only," I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Okay.
Currently, that's about 100 basis points. Rates are going up. That's a small nut, but the thing is, in ten years, you then have to go to PNI, and at current rates, that means the debt service goes up by a factor of about five.
If you say so.
About five. If you want four, I'll give you four.
If you want to have a financial discussion on this, I would suggest that you spend more time on the LDA side, because after that discussion will occur.
She had some questions that I felt-
And I think I tried to answer them, Mrs. Anderson. If there's any other questions that she has, I'll be happy to answer them as we-
So, we have some financial risk, it's a matter of whose-
There's financial risk in the entire downtown. Would you agree with that?
More so than-
Redevelopment?
And more so than what street works is set up with protections.
Well, where street works today?
That's true.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Come on up, Reverend.
Mr. Chairman, every committee, for the record, I'm Reverend Sheldon Bennett, Minister of Meritish, United First Parish Church, and, as this board well knows, longtime advocate for affordable housing. So, I'm not here tonight so much to speak to the particular merits of this project, although I do appreciate the good intentions of a very well-respected Quincy developer for moving the downtown development forward with-
More questions.
With what promises to be a quality project. But I speak here on behalf of moderate-income residents, working people, who are increasingly being priced out of housing here in the Quincy area, as I'm sure this board understands. And as we heard from Mr. Stevens, this is, I guess this is the fourth certificate of consistency that's being considered by the planning board, and to date, to my knowledge, they've all been for top-of-the-market luxury-type developments. So, I guess I'm speaking here for concern as to just how the city intends to achieve the goal of the URDP, to include within the mix of development in the downtown area residential units that are more affordable to more moderate-income residents. And I remind the planning board, you probably know this very well, that the URDP has amended recently, Amendment Number Four, restate, quote, "restates the objective for new housing development and includes affordable housing as development expands and supports housing opportunities within the URDP that are available to a variety of age and income groups, including elders, young professionals, and working people." And I remind the board that this has always been a goal of the URDP from the very beginning, which had and has had, on that basis, support from the general public. Now, I mean, we do understand that each project has its own economic dynamics, and that we understand that commitment to affordable housing is only but one of several factors that go into determining whether a project is consistent with the urban redevelopment, a particular project is consistent with the urban redevelopment plan. And we understand that the economics for this particular development, together with the parking garage and all the complexities, have its own reality. But so far, as I was saying, no project to date has been committed or proposed that includes within it a mix of more affordable units in a manner that's consistent with the urban redevelopment plan. So, on behalf of moderate-income households and everyone that's concerned with the sort of the social fabric, the social quality and vitality of the downtown district, I urge that this board consider how this particular application is consistent with the URDP objective for including within the downtown development a mix of more affordable units as well as upper-market units. And so, I urge this board, whatever you decide with respect to this particular application, that as development moves forward, just how is this board going to assure that, assure the residents of the city that have supported this plan all along, that we will achieve the goal of mix, of a good mix of residential units that are available, provide housing opportunities for a variety of folks, elders, more moderate-income, working-class people and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Anyone else wishes to speak? Anyone else?
John Roderfeld, 16 Tresley Lane. My two questions are two points I want to put out. Things, floor/area ratio, one of my favorite terms, and dwelling space per unit, okay? We're going to set records, I think, on both of this, on this project, okay? And then, green space that there, at the meeting last night, at the city council meeting, they tried to tell people that, that part, to the city councilors, they tried to fool our city councilors, that that park was part of the property. That's why I record these meetings, because sometimes they say one thing one day, and they say another thing another day. But they're not providing anything. This has to be one of the worst projects. I mean, when I look at the dwelling space per unit, it's around 110, okay, on the Business C, which I think is crazy to begin with, it's 500. This makes Mr. Murphy's project look like a shit. And it's the 117,000 square feet, when we're talking on the far, okay? You don't even list in here how many square feet are in there, so I couldn't do the math. I did get a copy of the LDA, which, they haven't even said what the price is. No one knows what is the price that Mr. O'Connell is paying to the city of Quincy. No one has told us that. I mean, how can you even have a contract for sale without knowing what the purchase price is? I mean, we are here way too early. The garage should be built, a good idea is letting Mr. O'Connell build the garage with his money. He can take out loans from the banks, and we can lease them from him at 2% or the lower bond rate that is available. Because basically, we're letting him build a building, not do parking. I mean, I really can't believe this project. I mean, this is, I called up some state senators today, seeing if they can maybe stop this, because to put it on top of this, they're asking for tax incentives. They're trying to say, "It's going to be a hardship for us to build a 15-unit building on a 13,000-square-foot lot." There's no hardship at all. There's a million developers that would build on that lot, who would be willing to pay full property taxes to the city. You should sell them a bigger pot of land where they provide the park. They're getting all these easements, I mean, the city council is going to approve the LDA. We can maybe have the planning board protect us, okay? Because that's what we need. The taxpayers need protection from a mayor and a city council who are not protecting the taxpayers. We need help, okay? This project needs to be scaled down, they need to, we need to be treated fairly, we need to collect fair taxes. They need to build their own parking. Every other developer builds their own parking. Let them build their own parking. Why should we build a parking lot? When someone builds a parking lot, it's their responsibility. You know, they said that if there's no parking lot, they're not going to do it. Let's just make it all green space. That would be beautiful. I just moved up here, I go there every day. I mean, I came here today, did anyone, tell anyone that Granite Street, they were going to take away lanes? So now, when you come up Granite, there's only one lane to the left, everyone has to get in there. And if you want to go into West of Chestnut there, you've got to go around to the left. So, all people, you're going to add all these more, it's insane, the traffic. I got stuck in that middle lane today, I had to take a right. You don't let people take a left. I had to go all the way down to Walton Hand and Parkway, take a left, make a circle. It's, it's a cluster, and it's not fair. You get people coming up, I mean, Peter O'Connell has made enough money in the city of Quincy at the Marina Bay, squeezing in as many apartments and as many condos on every square foot. Since I was a kid, I've seen it, and we're not, I'm not going to stand here silently and let them do the same thing to Quincy Center. And, you know, we need affordable housing, but we need a good plan. Mr. Stevens, please help us, okay? We need a good plan. There doesn't seem to be any sort of good plan. We need a good master plan, not 10 little pieces. I mean, we're selling a portion of the lot. Is this even a parcel that they're buying right now? Am I correct? It's not an actual parcel that we're selling. R1, what is R1? Is it an actual parcel? Like at the Registry of Deeds, could you buy R1, and R1 would say it's 13,500 square feet?
This is the whole function of the Urban Renewal Plan and the disposition agreement. That disposition agreement sets forth the legal subdivision of those parcels of land.
And right now, we're relying on the planning department to make sure, this is our last step. Once it all goes through, there's no stepping back. There's going to be a 15-story building there, and there is going to be extra parking, people parking all around the side streets. It's, even the parking lots out of there right now seem to be like little private parking lots. I mean, I did the math, and it comes out that they're going to be paying like about $7,000 a month to rent 130 parking spaces, without having to take any money out of their pocket to build that. That's a pretty good deal. I mean, they could rent those parking places out to the tenants, which they're probably going to do, at a much higher price, and they're going to be making a profit on the lease agreement they made with the city. So, I looked at the LDA, nothing makes sense. It's a whole bunch of pages that are just ridiculous. So, please help the taxpayers, because we need revenue from there. We're talking about IQ financing, we only get IQ financing for commercial development. There should be many more floors. Let's say if you are going to let them build there, make them build their own parking, make them buy a bigger lot, make them put more commercial stuff in that building, not just, they said at the meeting last night, it's only 4,000 spaces, 4,000 square feet of commercial units, and it's going to be four units. So, it's only going to be like four 1,000-square-foot units. That's not big enough for any big restaurant or anything. I'm thinking of four different people from the Quincy Chamber of Commerce that are probably going to have their little businesses there, you know? And that would even get me more angry. But please help the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Reverend.
I just wanted to address Reverend Bennett, who comes to a lot of these meetings, and I always appreciate his insight, and as he knows, but for the application of the audience, the planning board has a seat on Quincy's Community Preservation Committee, and we spend a good amount of time sourcing opportunities to create new affordable housing units within the city. But I agree with what you say, that not enough is necessarily being done as the Quincy Center redevelopment comes together to address affordable housing, but there's arguments on both sides why there isn't necessarily a mandatory obligation to have a certain amount of affordable housing. But speaking as an individual, and not on behalf of my fellow board members, I would like to see, of 124 units, a few of those be affordable housing. And so, I just ask you to take it back to the applicant. I think that would go a long way to addressing the well-stated concerns of Reverend Bennett, and hopefully, it would not make going forward of the project unfeasible.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Or sign?
Okay, I have, we received one piece of correspondence. Dear city officials, City Planner Stevens, Chairman of the Planning Board, and Council President Hughes, and all city councils. I'm unable to attend both public hearings tonight in lack of handicap parking in City Hall due to the orthopedic surgery and needing a walker. I need a handicap parking place big enough to get my walker out of the car, and I do not see any marked handicap parking spaces at City Hall to date. The nearest are in the T lot. I wish to be noted, excuse me, I wish to be noted by this email as, "Not in favor of your consideration of an LDA, a portion of the Hancock lot, Dennis Ryan Parkway, for the development of a 15-story luxury apartment building with business on the ground level for several reasons. Any land disposition should be a 100-year lease with provisions to protect the city. A 15-story building is much too tall and dense for the surrounding residential neighborhoods across Millisdale Road and Rivera Road side of the street. Payment in lieu of taxes of 10% of a zero, if nothing goes bad, is still $0. The rest of the taxpayers have to make up the difference for the city financial obligations. Do not approve the fact that these are luxury apartments with no affordable housing in the plan. No dollar amount for the proposed land sale, excuse me, to the O'Connellist developer is known as yet, after a year and a half of this anticipated sale of public land to a private developer. At this past Monday night's city council meeting presentation, some city councils made note of the fact of lack of a sale price. Although you are not discussing a taking accident on the parking garage at this time, this project is totally dependent on parking. I do not look forward to having a four- to six-story, close to 700 parking space parking garage, excuse me, directly across the street from my home and all the other homes on this side of Rivera Road. Homes were there originally before they were moved or taken to build the Hancock lot. Visual effects, the actual placement of a garage, air quality, emissions and pollution of any parking facility, and the effects on the environment must be studied and shared with the public. As I understand, the parking garage is to be built at city expanse. However, most Quincy residents will not be able to afford living there. This also means that the city must pay for moving utilities, a sewer and drainage system, as well as what happens to the old town roof that still runs under the Hancock lot. We need to know the costs and how this will be paid. In summary, the heightened density, tax write-offs, no consideration of affordable housing in the 15-story apartment building. Lack of financial information for a sale or a long-term lease are unavailable. The location and construction of the parking facility, and how it is paid for, environmental and air quality are close to 700-car garage. Traffic flows and access and exits from the parking structure, and how codependent one project is on the garage, and the other LDAs for the hotel and other projects on the same Hancock lot. I also hope our city will make sure all residents, including those who need handicap parking and disabled citizens, are not continually excluded from parking, from attending public hearings at our city hall. Thank you for your concluding the statement in the public hearing tonight, for which I got a written notice as in a butter, and for the upcoming city council meeting on December 19. Signed by Arlene Goodman, 31A Rivera Road, owner of 31 to 33 and 35 to 37 Rivera Road, Quincy.
Okay. I think as council is represented, the city council is going to be considering a public hearing on the night, on Monday night?
Yes.
So, we're going to wait for your request of the disposition of the LDA, all right?
Absolutely. We'll be back again.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any members of the board, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go back to the public hearing for 57 Quincy Shore Drive Site Plan and Special Termit Land Board Case 2016-16. In accordance with provisions of Master of Law's Draft 48, Section 11, the Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesdays, December 14, 2016, at 8:52, when the first four boards and commissions are in Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, on the application of Reverend Hahnels, 15 Foster Street, Quincy Mast 02169, for site plan review under the Quincy zoning title, Home Run title 17, Section 9.5.1, site plan review. The applicant proposes the demolition of an existing auto repair shop and accessory parking lot, and the construction of a new 6-story, 28-unit multifamily residential structure with onsite garage parking for 56 parking spaces. Applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Site contains 12,521 plus or minus square feet of land, and is located at 57 Quincy Shore Drive. Subject property is located within the Residence B zoning district, and is shown in Accessus Plan 607 for Lot 2, Block 3. Mr. Hahnels?
Mr. Chairman, any members of the board, my name is Paul Hahnels, and I work with the Murphy Trust. I think I'm presently the owner of 57 Quincy Shore Drive. In fact, I've been in the owners of 57 Quincy Shore Drive since 1977. If you're aware, it was the Murphy, ghostwriting place there. Recently, they moved their property, their business from there to Wayne, and they were Wayne right now, 3A. What they're playing on business, and what they're asking the board to consider, first, before we get to that point, they have gone before the zoning board, for certain variants that happened right from the zoning board, and that's what brings them here today. What they're proposing to do is build a 25-unit, I'm sorry, pause this, build it right there on the site right there. The unit will, they'll consist of 28 units, sorry, parts of them, classes, I'm sorry, 28 units, in which each unit having two parking spots. So, they, it's going to be two layers apart, and of course, two floors will be apart, and the residents will be upstairs above that. They made two levels apart, and the reason that, it is a congested area, there is a lot of parking, private roads, and they wanted to make sure, work with the planning, that every unit has these two parking spots, and that's what the third one they have right now. Those parking spots will be either connected through Quincy Shore Drive, or they're going to be coming up Atlantic Street. All parking lots will be separated, so that the water pool will be assigned to some units, and the pool above will be assigned to other units. They designed this so as you come across, as you come over Quincy Shore Drive, to come over the bridge with the deposit, that's what you're going to see. That is the corner, what they want to make is, they want to make it the entrance port of the city of Quincy. As we know, every single corner of the city has an entrance port. It's a gateway, and they want to make this building the gateway of that, of that area. We're just in this process now, we know we have to go pay with you, and we want to bring this forward to the board. Have any preliminary questions they had, that you may have. We know there's going to be more questions down the road. We know that the pay review is going to bring up some issues that we will deal with. We did have a neighborhood meeting, and I will say that the board councilor made sure we have neighborhood meetings, calls them probably every two weeks, to see what the status of this is, so he is concerned, but he's actively involved in this. We're asking the board to consider this, let us go through pay review, let us see what we have, what we find there, let's see what pay review says about this potential project, and we look at the end, have a favorable recommendation from pay review, and work with them. We also look forward to the board, to the board vote in favor, but again, that's down the road. So.
Any questions from the board members?
If you're hitting on right now, the things that I care about, especially what we're talking about, the scene, you know, part of the gate, and it's going to come out on the bridge. And so, currently, it looks like a lighthouse.
Yes.
So, will that top part be lit up at night, visible from the bridge, different colors?
Yes, what they want to make that is a place where the residents there can actually go up there, and you see the view of the city. And if you see the view of Boston, you can see the view of Quincy. They want to make it an area where people can actually go up there, the residents go up there, and there's going to be a little section of it, just for the residents to be up there. Yes, and that is going to be lit up. It's, that corner itself is the one that faces the road as you come up there.
Yep. And so, I think, you know, just as the process goes on, getting an understanding of what that would look like at your coming over from Westchester into Quincy, I think that would be really helpful.
And I, that was asked before, and I think that's a great idea, because all you see right here is just a flat piece of property. So, I think the view as you're coming over the road would be important, and we'll work on that.
Any other questions?
The parking, thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I got on there. The, where are you going to enter and exit the parking, and are the two floors going to be connected, or will they be separate?
No, the two floors will be separate. We're going to enter one right up Quincy Shore Drive. Right where that starts, where that entrance of Quincy Shore Drive is, is where the road of Quincy Shore Drive turns from two to three lanes. And you come off Quincy Shore Drive, if you're not familiar with the area, that's the exit you're going to want to get off the bridge, the passageway. What's going to happen is, you can either take a right off the passageway, or you can turn right, probably 50 yards up into the, into the units. What happens is, that is exactly where we go from two to three lanes. Any further up would have been a hazard, so we, that's exactly why we put it there. We thought that was the best way to put it. Two parking lots will not be connected, you've got to come to Atlantic Street to go to the bottom, to the bottom.
Coming to the gateway?
Yes. I will say also, the Murphys have had this since 1977. They're not turning into condos, they want to remain landlords, they're familiar with the area, they don't want to go away. Miami City is, the community will, some community members will also be living there. This is something they don't want to give away, they want to maintain their vision, what they have there, they want to be there.
Any other questions? Mr. Hahnels, you alluded to zoning board.
Yes.
Has that been heard?
That's been heard, we want the zoning board, the variants were granted, but again, we're being, now that we've done that, we also, we also realize that we're for the planning board, that may also address some of those issues. We will, and I understand, speaking with Mr. Fancys, and speaking with Mr. Stevens, this is going to be a process, and what you pay review is going to have a lot of effort, and it should. This is going to be a gateway. Every, like I said before, being chair on another planning board, every city in town has gateways. We want to make sure that this is what that gateway deserves, and we believe it will be.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing. Offer the public an opportunity to speak, and all I'm going to ask you is, identify yourself. Anybody wishing to speak?
Yeah, I do. I'm Ivy Chan, literally right across the street from the Murphy Brothers' property, with their brick house, 63 Atlantic Street, under Redwood Cross. So, this, where we live now, it's two families and single families, 1,800 homes, 1,900 home-built homes. And this is six stories. It's going to be quite a big building in a nice residential quiet neighborhood. Traffic, one of the entrances is actually right across the street from my house, so the Atlantic Street entrance is right across the street from my driveway, and I only have a two-car driveway. I don't have a long driveway. So, it's going to be directly across from me, so that means me getting out, or them going in, traffic's going to be insane, as it is now, because right now, parking on that street is a hassle as it is, and right now, they only have two parking spaces per unit, there's no visitor parking, they keep trying to tell me there's not a lot of people that are going to be driving cars, because there are going to be a lot of young folks that are maybe living there. Yeah, that's not going to happen. Right now, we have people that are parking, they don't live there, they live at other buildings down the street, and they don't have parking. So, they're parking in our street. So, this, there's a going to be no parking situation. I don't believe it, because I know there's going to be parking issues. So, this is six stories high, and I don't believe it belongs in our neighborhood, because it is so tall. And our buildings are two-family, tiny townhouses, and then single-family homes. And that off-street right there is always busy, it's two-way, you need to go this way, or you go that way, there's people flying, the light on the top is going to be lit up all the time, that means it's going to be kind of bright at night all the time. I don't mind an apartment building being built there, but a six-story isn't just a little too tall, and parking needs to be situated, you know, addressed, because only two parking per unit, and no visitor parking, whatever, if a family comes, you know where they're going to be parking, on Atlantic Street. And that other street is very busy as well. So, you know, I don't, like I said, I don't mind something being built there, but it doesn't fit in the neighborhood at all. So, same.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I want to say something.
Right, sir? Just identify yourself.
I'm Tap Chan, I live at 63 Atlantic Street, which is, her husband and I live across the street from them, and if you were like looking at that building, and you were coming up the highway, and cars are flying, this is only like, I want to say about 500 feet into right off the highway there, on the bridge, and you've got to turn right real fast? I mean, that's going to cause some, you know, slowing down immediately, real fast, and if they can't get into that, they would have to go around where the residential is on Atlantic Street, and come up, and people fly on that road all the time, going by, get to the highways, and stuff. And people fly on that road all the time, going by, get to the highways and stuff like that, so. I was just like thinking that it's going to be a little bit too much on the traffic, on such a big unit on the corner, which is already a lot of traffic on that road.
There's a turnoff on that one. When you get off the exit 12, and you go up the ramp, and then you can turn off and continue going Quincy Shore Drive. So Murphy's is like right there where that turn is, so if you have an entrance right there to a parking space, you know, people are turning this way, and then they're going this way, they're going to be taking a quick right to go into the parking space. So I can see that there's going to be issues. There are already like accidents on that corner as it is. So, you know, our concern is that there's going to be a lot of jam in that area, and there already is a lot of traffic jam in the morning when you're trying to get out, and in the evening when you're trying to get home. And I've been living there for 16 years, and it hasn't improved any.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak? Anybody else wishes to speak or sign?
Okay, we're going to leave this open. I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Just, I appreciate you guys coming out and giving your perspective from neighborhood, and Ms. Hahnness, forgive me, I'm sure you mentioned this, but has there been coordination with the board counselor to set up a committee meeting to discuss the effect?
We actually have, we actually have a committee meeting already, but the board counselor, I believe they-
Yes, all of them, yes. We did explain the situation to these concerns about the parking, about the Atlantic Street entrance being there, and that there's no parking for, you know, people that will come and visit. And our, our response to that is a lot of young folks will be moving in, so they may not have cars, the T's right there, nobody can guarantee that no one's going to own a car.
Nobody's guaranteed, but I will say, she, she's actually right. A lot of people are parked in the neighborhood because they go onto the T. And they park in their neighborhood, they leave the cars all day long, and I think it disrupts the neighborhood.
But it's not just the T, there's other people that own houses that may not have parking as well.
What, what they've done, and the planning department was adamant about this, was they couldn't go with the 1.5 per unit. It had to be two spots per unit. And that's, that's, that's what is on, that's what's required, the minimum, they're above the requirement. And they did it because the planning board, the planning department made it clear that that's what they had to do. We did speak to the board counselor again, he's been calling me every couple of weeks to see what's going on with this. He understands there are parking issues on those streets, and there are people speeding through those streets. And the last time we spoke, I'm sorry, the last time before that, he talked about having the police down there more often to monitor the parking, and also monitor the speed that go through neighborhoods. And I think that's something that the applicant can control, they're more than willing to work with the board counselor to make sure these things are addressed.
I still, I still-
I want to say something. Since last time they had that meeting about parking, they sent the cop overnight, in the middle of the night, like 2:00 in the morning, gave everybody tickets on that street, which is where everybody, you know, I know there's no overnight parking on the street, but, but everybody parks on the street, let's put it that way, and they kind of picked on everybody that live on that road, and made everybody pay tickets that, that night.
And like I said, we only have a front two-car parking space, and we have the cars. We don't have a long driveway, so everybody on that street got tickets, right after we had that meeting.
Yeah.
I will tell you, sir, since I live in a neighborhood that's very, very close, it's not just your neighborhood that they take for overnight parking.
But it just so happened, right after we had that meeting, that's when the trees came up. So.
Okay, so we're going to continue this to, well, we'll-
We start with the pay review process, so I imagine a couple of months.
Okay.
February 8th?
So, a motion to continue this to February 8th?
Yep.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Continue it to February 8th.
Mr. Chairman, Intervue Board, thank you very much, and have a nice holiday.
Thank you. Do you like the gateways in that other community that you represent?
All they have from the central pay review.
Okay, that's a little list of public hearings. In terms of business, business meeting, the first item is to finalize the transportation-oriented district zoning overlay, excuse me, design guidelines, City Council Order 2016 dash 249, Amendment Code 17, zoning section 8, by adding a new section relating to transit-oriented districts. Mr. Stevens?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, my apologies, we weren't able to finalize those guidelines, so they're not before you can finalize. I will report that the city council did approve the TOD zoning overlay district. They made some changes, though, and that's sort of what we're catching up with on the guidelines, to make sure we can incorporate that. The biggest changes are the Wollaston T Station and Quincy Adams T Station were removed from that overlay, so some of the graphics needed to get updated and so on and so forth. So I did get a final draft, but I did not want to submit that to this group today without you, given you guys ample opportunity to take a look at that and be comfortable with endorsing those. I do expect to have those ready for you January 11th. And you'll have, you'll be receiving your copies for review prior to the planning board, probably in the next planning board packet you receive.
Okay. Okay, the next item, business and review and determination to endorse or deny, approval not required, that's what called E and R, approval not required, for 58 to 64, Faxton Lane, Planning Board Case 2016, A and R dash 13. Just to give you a little bit of background, in the past, I would say probably 40 years, the submission of an approval not required plan, formally submitted, which means it has to be filed in the city clerk's office, and copies given to the planning board. The planning director has been authorized to sign the approval not required plan, provided it meets the language of subdivision control law. The problem has always been, should, excuse me, the problem has been, it needs to be endorsed within 21 days of submission. Now, the board, actually, the planning director has been the authorized signature for the board, understanding that the board may not be meeting within the prescribed 21 days. Recently, city solicitors review, as the chairman, that they need to come to the board, even though they've been endorsed, or have been endorsed by the board's representative, whether it be the director or, because I've been the authorized signature as chairman, and even before that, when I was planning director, I was the authorized chair, authorized signature. But the city solicitors ruled that you should come into the board, okay, and if the 21-day thing is in jeopardy, then the board strike that. The authorized person could sign it, but to make sure that the board was aware of the action. The 58 to 64 Faxton Lane was endorsed, am I correct?
Correct.
Because if not, the 21 days would have expired and then it's deemed approval. Now, it met, it is an approval not required. In other words, it doesn't necessitate a subdivision, as long as it has sufficient frontage and land area, simply stayed on a road recognition, then it can be endorsed as an approval not required. So both 58, 64 Faxton Lane and 14 Dartmouth Street were both endorsed, because if they had not been endorsed, the board wasn't meeting in the prescribed 21 days, and they would have been approved. The 7 to 11 Independence Avenue is one that came in in a timely fashion so that the board could review it. And again, this-
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd just add that these A and Rs are not like planning board cases that require a public hearing, two weeks' notice. These would come in as simple business items.
All right, so the 7 to 11 Independence Avenue, which is right on the Braintree Quincy line, this is a, oh, this is, okay, so as you can see, Braintree Planning Board endorsed it, okay, as an approval not required. There's, there's a little used frontage section that talks about minimum lots, I'm sorry, minimum frontage of 20 feet. Clearly, this lot in Quincy only has 27.71 feet. Yeah, the land area is, is like 8,400 square feet, which, I think, is, is that industrial? Industrial, okay, so the minimal lot size is 5,000 square feet, with a frontage of, don't quote me, but I want to say I think it's 75 feet. But clearly, these are being merged, I assume.
Yes.
Yeah, see, it says that, okay, yeah. See, they're merging this lot to this lot, okay? So the entire parcel will now be conform, okay? So, my opinion, okay, was that the board should endorse this, okay, because it is an approval not required. It's actually a conveyance plan. It's just merging this with this, okay, and for whatever purposes. I know there could have been interest in developing it, but I know that it's got some other issues. So my recommendation would be that the board endorses this. And I would so recommend, which means-
There are already a project there.
I, I think it's vacant. I think there have been several projects up there proposed.
The Braintree side has been activated.
It was appealed, I believe. I think there was a decision issued by, well, I think the Quincy zoning board appeals, and I think Braintree, but I think it was appealed, and it's probably still under appeal by, I don't know who appealed it, but this would merge it all, this one lot, and-
Give you enough frontage when you, there was not the border of Braintree to Quincy right there, would be enough frontage on both sides.
Yeah.
Again, since we interrupted that lot with a town line, that's, that's the reason for the lack of frontage in Quincy and the problems of frontage in Braintree.
So-
And when a project eventually gets built on, it gets pulled over to, I'm sort of making a few, like, does become a joint planning board for Braintree Quincy?
It could.
It could, yeah, yeah. Which I think, which I think happened on, on at least one proposal. This is the old Blackie Pym's garage.
Yeah.
But, and in all honesty, okay, there were some loopholes within, within subdivision control law, but, which would necessitate the board, the authorized signature, signing it, okay? But the roadblock then becomes, you get on to inspection services, and it doesn't mean zoning, okay, so then it's in front of Mr. Duke or his, okay? So by the mere fact of endorsing, okay, doesn't guarantee that it meets all the zoning, which is a stopgap in some cases. All right, so I will-
Yes.
Sign, I'll pass it along.
That you own the one?
I have all the paper copies down for signing. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The paper copies are-
Are in here?
Yes.
Yeah, probably you're right. I remember Callahan saying that if he should, there should be a motion and a second, and we'll prove, prove them under the place, the 7 to 11 Independence Avenue. So if Mr. Callahan made the motion, is there a second? Ah, second. Discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question about which Faxton, of the five or six Faxton street road lanes that we have in Quincy, is the one that we mentioned earlier, I'm just curious?
58 to 62.
Do you have to?
Where physically is it the same, because you've got, considering this?
Is it the one over near us?
The board 58 to 64.
Faxton Park Road, and then this Faxton-
No, it's Faxton Road.
Faxton Road, that's the Faxton Park Road.
No.
Faxton Lane. You know there's like four Faxtons.
Yeah. The hot way.
And they're all-
No, the way. You've got to sign all, you've got to sign the paper copies, too.
So we'll sign everything after we're finished.
You can if you don't mind.
What's that?
You can if you don't mind.
I'll sign here, so call the case.
There's some law there, again. You've got a lot of stuff. Could be 28 different people, and all with the replica. That's what I said to my son, when I said, for crying out, you're writing like a-
You'll pick a road, too.
Yeah, they all have to sign, the paper copies. Okay, so Faxton.
Black pen for that one, please.
Black pen, or a blue pen to the paper, black pen to the white.
Susan's lost, and don't deviate. While everybody's signing, I'm just going to go to the next discussion item, which is to review and vote or accept the, or edit the 2017 post-scheduled for planning board meetings. I have a problem, because I'm going to be, I'm going to be in Normandy on the 14th of June. So I'm doing a tour, well, we're doing a tour of Caris, Normandy. I don't know if anybody else is supposed to see.
I would just like to put it out there that it would be great, you know, I can have a lease of July and August. That used to be how we did things.
Gold.
Or at least August.
It hasn't happened in a while, so just, I understand they were busy.
It's like me.
It would be great if we could pick at least one and make it a no-go.
I'm putting the intention out there for you.
That's, that's my only addition.
But, but I was beholden to securing those dates, obviously, you know, subject to change as necessary.
Emergency dates. Oh, I think I'll definitely be gone the 12th. I'm definitely gone July 12th, so no call.
Okay, so could I ask that everybody please note date on your schedule, what dates you're going to, really, please, just write your names.
Someone will be taking it down.
I'll give it a little bit.
I should be okay.
The controlling, no, I'm sorry. And the last item we don't have to do, because I can't endorse the My Law's or the subdivision, because the appeal period hadn't run out yet, so I advise to Harry Kennedy, you have to wait for the next meeting, because it requires 21 days for somebody to file appeal, and the 21 days, 20 days haven't expired, so.
Mr. Chairman?
We don't need to do that. The only thing I need now is a motion to adjourn. I wish, I wished everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy New Year.
Thank you, so do you.
Safe and happy.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I was going to happen more.
Oh, yeah.
My wife is really, I think, my wife is really a tough shell. My wife is right out in the garden, but I'm trying to, I should just go to the meetings alone, I'm trying to bring all the great members along, and have a great, as you know, discuss a little over here, the meetings will go much easier.
There definitely will be a lot more in there.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, everybody, have a great-
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing the treats for us, yep.
No, it's right here.
Rob, give me the dimensions I've got, please.
Site point, I know it's a lot today, so I'm happy to bring it home, and respect what I'm gonna want.
And Mike, are you using some?
Oh, really?
Thank you, yeah.
What's interesting?
Yeah, just give it to me, I go through it, because there are certain pieces that I. No, it's not that, I just, I'm so friendly, and, well, yes, I do save the city money.
That's right.
And I think that would be.
Hey, Wilson boy.